Appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. The petitioner or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will then be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks. What does that mean? That means that when it's your turn, you will come up to the podium, press the little button that looks like a person speaking, the red light will come on, state your name and address for the record, then you will tell us why you're here, although we do have it in front of you, we would like to hear it from you, and then we will ask you some questions, and then I will say, is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Those people will come up, state their name and address for the record, and say what a wonderful person you are, and they have no problem that you're going to build something that overlooks their bedroom. Then I will say, is there anybody in opposition? So, it's not a full room tonight, but there may be three, or four, or five, or six of you that are in opposition to one application. After the, you come up to the podium, name and address, tell us why you're in opposition. Now, we don't really want to hear that they're lousy neighbors, that you haven't gotten along with them for 10 years, that their dog barks all night, or that their leaves fall in your pool, et cetera, et cetera. You, we're here for dimensional relief, and if they are building something too close to your property line, then you can tell us why that shouldn't be. We probably already know that, but we'd like to hear it from you. Then, if say there's five or six of you, and the first three say everything there is to say, then the next few people can just come up and state their name and address and say, I agree with the previous neighbors, because there's really no sense in repeating everything. Then you, or your builder, or your lawyer can come back up, and if you disagree with what your neighbor said, you have a chance to talk about that. The decision will be typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period, you can't do anything for 20 days. And you could always call Grace or see Grace tomorrow, and she can explain that to you. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded stenographically by our clerk. When you're at the microphone, please speak clearly, and only speak when at the podium. Look, I have my cellphone here, I'm not about to tell you, you can't use it, you never know when somebody from your family might need you, but could you just put it on silent? When you, after you're done speaking, if you go back and sit down and you remember something, don't shout it from your seat, just raise your hand, you can always come back up. I also would just like to touch upon tonight hardships. It seems that on everybody's, not everybody's, 98.5% of the people that fill out their application, you have to fill out, you want a variance, because one of the stipulations is there has to be a hardship. So, personal circumstances, it's not a hardship. I had somebody once say that they needed to build a sunroom because their in-laws were losing their eyesight, and they needed more light in their life. Well, that's a hardship personally, it's not a dimensional hardship. What does that mean? That means we're talking about the topography of your land, so the shape of your lot narrows. You want to build an addition, but because your, your property narrows, maybe for three feet, you need extra inches. That's a hardship because of the shape of your, of your land. Maybe you can't build on the left side of your house because that's where your sewer line is. That's a hardship. Maybe you are lucky enough to have a beautiful brook running on the right side of your house, and you can't build on that side because of the brook. Those are hardships. It's things to do with the land. It has nothing to do with your personal circumstances. So, there are boards, believe me when I tell you, there are boards that if you put down a hardship that's personal, they don't, right away they deny you because you have to have a hardship. This board, we're very, very fair, and we take all of that into consideration, and because you come up to the podium and you speak to us, although you might have put down, I'm looking at one right now, a hardship that's not a hardship, we're not going to deny you for that. I mean, I should say we should deny you for that, but we don't. I just, and I will say this, and try to get more examples every month, because it's becoming a problem that nobody is really understanding, when they see hardship, they think of personal hardship. It's not a personal hardship, it's a dimensional topography of your land. Gabish? Okay. Did I say everything I wanted to say? Yes. So, the other thing is, we are going to start with number five, only because that is requested to be continued.
Through the chair, PBD lost two public servants in the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of Freddie Mertag from the Licensing Board, he passed on July 15th, and Stuart Lozares from the Conservation Commission passed a couple of days ago. So, we could all give a moment of silence in honor of those two. Thank you.
Number five on tonight's agenda deals with the property at 124 Summit Street, and we have a communication from attorney Jack Kelty that is dated Friday, July 18th, and that communication says, please accept this correspondence as a request that the above referenced matter be continued to the next scheduled meeting of the ZBA, and that would be on September 15th of 2025, to enable the applicant to resolve some issues with the abutting landowners. Move to accept communication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now ready for number one.
All right. Number one on tonight's agenda is the application of Greg Salentano, trustee care of Andre Olivera, Olivera, 211 Western Ave, Essex Mas, I'm sorry, that's where the petitioner is from. They seek a variance to allow proposed porch and requires relief of front yard of 19 feet instead of 20 feet required for the premise located at 10 Cuna Road in PBD, Massachusetts,
All right. My name is Gregory Salentano from 10 Cuna Road, PBD, Mass, and seeking relief for a proposed porch on the front of the home.
And this is my builder, Andre Olivera.
Yep, and I think we all had a chance to look at it. I just have to make note about your hardship. Your hardship wasn't a hardship, just so you'll know. If you ever come before us again, oh, you're shaking your head, so you understand. Okay.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Oh, anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition hearing on the matters before the board?
Second. Go ahead, David, you can second it.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Galucci?
Yes, you're all set, you've been approved.
Thank you. Any questions, you can call Grace tomorrow.
Thank you.
Number two, Chris Ryder.
Number two on tonight's agenda is the application of Christopher C. Ryder, 10 Greenwood Road, PBD, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow proposed 12-by-12 addition which requires relief to right-side yard of eight feet rather than 15 feet as allowed for the premise located at 10 Greenwood Road in an R1A zoning district.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Ryder. I live at 10 Greenwood Road in PBD, Massachusetts. Thank you. So, we seek relief this evening for a proposed addition to the rear of our home, it's 12-foot by 12-foot addition to an existing bedroom slash office in which we hope to create a larger living space, a living room. Currently, our living room is open concept to a kitchen, and we'd like to separate our living space from our kitchen and turn the existing living room into a dining area. So, it would be dining area, kitchen, and then on the other side of the first floor, a 12, a larger living room space.
Questions, comments by the board? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition to matters before the board?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Galucci?
Yes, you've been approved.
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
Number three, 19 Centennial Drive.
Number three on tonight's agenda is the application of 19 Centennial Drive LLC, care of attorney John Kelty. Petitioner seeks relief from sections 10.5.4 and 10.5.4B for landscaping requirements in the industrial zone, and seeks a variance to allow 25 feet setbacks required where one foot is requested, and where 10 feet is required, four feet is requested for the premises located at 19 Continental Drive in an IP zoning district.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in PBD, Massachusetts, and I'm appearing on behalf of 19 Centennial Drive LLC, and they're, the manager of the LLC is Ann DeSantis. This is a strictly, a variance from the landscape requirements, so we can cut into that landscape's perimeter, and as the plan indicates, we would add a couple more parking spaces. At current, we are fully tenanted, we've been fully tenanted for a number of years, and our, we've outgrown the parking that we've created, so we'd like to cut into some of that landscaping on Summit Street and, and add parking. We have said in the application that we do think that we would have an impact, if you will, on traffic inasmuch as parking spaces are at such a premium, and this is such a busy corner, there are times when people queue in order to get into 19 Centennial Drive and see their doctor, optometrist, and we would like to provide them with parking so there'd be no, no waiting on Centennial Drive to get in or circulate around, and we're adding quite a few more spaces, and in order to do that, we need to cut into the landscape, and we seek the variances from the two sections we've indicated. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicants for this variance are the original owners of this building, and they've had the building since the, really, the early development of the Centennial Industrial Park. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the board?
Through the chair. Jack, two questions. How many spaces are you planning on adding, and is there going to be any additional curb cuts?
No. No additional curb cuts, and the spaces we're adding is, I tell you, there are 16 spaces at the front on Summit Street that will be added, and there are two more in the rear in a portion of an island that's going to be removed, so we'll add 14 plus 16 is 30. How's my math? And then two, 32 spaces, which will make a tremendous impact on the building itself and on the traffic.
I'm actually interested.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Jack, it looks like you already have 100 parking spaces. This is really going to take away from any landscaping in the front of foot.
It will take away that strip of landscaping. We have a willingness to add landscaping to that corner, but I do believe that whatever we added should be very low because of site distance. We don't want trees or anything that would impair a site, the site distance on that corner. We could beef up the, and put floral, you know, annuals in the, in the area of landscaping that is south, on the other side of our curb cut, and be happy to do that.
Through the chair, that was one of the things I was thinking of, was line of sight, and having the cars there instead of the existing landscaping would probably impede line of sight more than the existing landscaping. Would that be a fair assessment? So, if all the vehicles are parked up front on the corner here, you, there's just a, what is there, a grass strip in the front? That's all there is, right?
Yeah.
It's just grass strip?
Yeah, it's only lawn, yeah.
So, would this do more to impede line of sight for, is there, there's no traffic study, right?
No.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
We did make community development aware of the request for variance, and they posed no objection.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, the matters before the board?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Slattery?
Uh, no.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Galucci?
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't pass. Number four, number four, um, number four, 75 Washington Street.
Number four on tonight's application is an application of Jakuj and Prendera, I'm sorry about that, care of John Kel, attorney John Kelty. Petitioner seeks a variance to construct freestanding unattached ADU being 45 feet by 20 feet, 900 square feet in rear yard, with relief to left-side yard of six feet rather than 15 feet required, and right-side yard of 13 feet rather than 15 feet required. Premises located at 75 Washington Street in an R4 zoning district.
Thank you once again. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney, I practice law at 40 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass, appearing on behalf of the Jakur, Jakuj family who reside at the property at 1, at 75 Washington Street. I note that the, the, the variance I've asked for is a left-side variance of six feet and a right-side variance of 13 feet. I misread the plan, and the plan actually shows us with 15 feet on the side, so I do not need that right side. I believe that the people that are here this evening are predominantly from Washington Place, which is on our left side. That is the area where I've asked for the variance. If, as we get a little deeper into the, the, tonight's application, we could, I believe that I could easily move my structure to the right-hand side so that the left-hand side had the 15 feet, and I would need to re-advertise, come back, and seek the, seek the variance on the right side, where I believe there are neighbors that are not objecting, but we could go. The other point I wanted to make was that the, tonight's agenda, it does say that the building is, that I'm proposing was 200 feet, it's 20, and the clerk suggested properly that it's, it's 45 by 20, 900 square feet. With that, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. This is a unit that is going to be built for the Jakuj's daughter. She would live on the premises, they have a right-of-way that allows them They have a right-of-way that allows them access to the rear of the property. That right-of-way is on the right-hand side of the property. And Mr. Mello has provided a plan that shows where we currently park. It also shows the right-of-way, and that plan does show us 15 feet off the right side and six feet off the left. The hardship is inasmuch as we have a long, narrow lot. In fact, the property built, the building built at number 75 precedes zoning. In fact, it precedes essentially the turn of the century, and the building takes up virtually all of the frontage, and that's why there was, resulted in a right-of-way allowing parking in the back. So, we're happy to use that right-of-way as access to this rear property, and at the same time, we've built the smallest ADU possible. But because of the narrow, the lot is only 43.50 feet in width, and we are, we have a hardship which is the shape and size, width of the lot, and we seek the variance of six feet for our left side yard. Thank you. I don't think you're working. Oh, sorry about that. Jesus, you know, you threw an awful lot at us that's very different from the application that before us tonight. We can move it, we don't need the 15, we can move it. Well, if all that is true, then what's before us tonight is is no good, right? So, to me, I would rather say, all right, reapply, and then let's look at what we're actually approving. If we approve this tonight, I don't know, that's the way it's written up, they're going to be able to have the 13 feet. You know, they're going to, they're going to have the extra two feet. They might want to use it, they might not want to use it, but nothing's going to prevent them from using it because we approved with a 13-foot setback. So, I, you know, personally would like to see, these ADUs are new to us. We all know the reason why they exist, for housing and affordable housing. I don't know if this is the intention of the owner to be a good citizen and provide affordable housing for people, but are, if it might be a good reason to make some money. But I need to see. I don't know enough about the ADUs. Yeah, I agree. In the right circumstances, it's probably a good idea, but in the wrong circumstances, it's a bad idea in my eyes, because now you're jamming stuff in there. And if I'm going to jam anything in there, I want to see what I'm jamming. And I don't see it with the way you explained it tonight. Yeah, I understand that you, you know, we could, I could get the 15 feet, well, apply and only apply for the right, for the right side. Let me see what it looks like, and let me see what, well, I can see what neighbors it's going to affect now. I don't know, maybe, maybe the neighbors say they don't seem to, to say that the neighbors don't seem to oppose it as much as the other neighbors, well, they have no reason to be here tonight the way it's written now, but they might have a reason to be here, you know? Yeah, I, I would like to hear from the neighbors, and I agree with you that I'm not seeking any relief tonight, and it may not make sense to even come back moving the unit if we're going to have a lot of opposition, you know? So, I'd like to let the hearing continue, and then I would ask that the matter be continued or withdrawn. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Through the chair. Kind of jumping on, piggybacking on what my colleague just said, if I, so I know you've already agreed to redraw plans and come back, we could definitely have the public hearing. If you come back, and this is an odd-shaped lot, are you saying you're going to centralize this building now and ask, and ask for 10 feet on each side? Is that, is that what your aim would be?
I would probably slide it and meet the zoning requirement on the left side. I would just reverse where I'm asking for the variance. I would ask for the six feet on the right side.
Okay.
In all likelihood.
Thinking that if you had the right side setback, there's no structure on that side? Is that what you think?
Maybe no objection on that side.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yep, I understand what you want to do.
Okay.
Question through the chair for attorney Kelty. Did I read somewhere that this is, the current existing dwelling is a two-family? Is that accurate? The main house is a two-family now, converted in the 90s, I believe.
I'm just looking at the property record card.
Yeah, that's, I think that's where I saw it, Jack. Page one, somewhere here, yes, 1196, it looks like.
Yeah, the actual, the property record card says that it's three units. I believe it's two.
Again, through the chair, what's the, what's the parking requirement for, let's go with a three-family?
We have an area that we show eight spaces, and there's a ADU's require, or when we pass the local ADU, it's going to require one, and individual apartments require two.
And the intent of the one parking spot for the ADU is, is in that same eight-vehicle area?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Jack, how are you going to get a fire truck in the back there? It's pretty tight between the buildings, especially with the bump out on 73 Cottage Washington Street. You're never going to be able to get a truck in the back there. I know this property and this, there's no way you're going to get in there. You can barely get a car in there. I couldn't get a pickup truck in there.
I would, I would, before next meeting, I would call upon the fire department to see what, how they would face the current property and then what the impact if, if I end up back here.
Okay. I would imagine everybody here is to speak either in favor or opposition. So, if you are in favor, nope, in opposition. Okay, so why don't you, once again, make a line, name and address for the record, stick to the subject. If the first five people have already said what you want to say, you could say, I agree with them, I would just like to add, da-da-da, and then we'll hear all of you. So, let's begin.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sharon Kelly. I live at 1 Washington Place, and I oppose this for privacy issues, safety issues. There's just not enough room, you know, there to even put anything like that. So, thank you.
My name is Jake Mackey. I'm here with my wife, Jen. We are at 3 Washington Place, and this goes to most of the distance of our backyard. There's already some pretty big structures that have been built there already that kind of, so I just, I don't think it makes any sense to put a house, 45-foot house, when he's got a three-family. And at that point, doesn't it become a commercial property if you have two residences that you're, that you're renting out? Is it zoned for commercial? I don't know, but I think it's a residential property, so it feels like, it just doesn't fit. I understand they want to maximize, but there's a reason why no one's built there.
Nancy Davis, 79 Washington Street, directly next door to the structure. I oppose it along with my husband, Glenn Davis. The house is zoned a two-family. It's assessed as a three-family, and I do believe it's being used as a four-family. About 10 cars, four mailboxes, and lots of people coming and going. I am in the mortgage business. Adding this ADU would make it a five-family and therefore a commercial. I did not buy a house next to a commercial structure. I 100% oppose it for the safety, for the fire department, et cetera.
Hi, I'm at 3 Washington Place. My name is Jennifer Mackey. I'm right at 3 Washington Place. This property is mostly abutting mine at six feet. I know Mr. Kelty had mentioned he was making it as small as possible, 900 square feet, but I thought that was the maximum you could be making an ADU. It's certainly not the smallest, it's the biggest. It's literally 10 feet longer than my home, right six feet within my fence, like, hey. So, it just, it's like squished in right there, so I definitely do not want it there.
Hi, my name is Alse Vera. I live at 7 Washington Place, and I agree with all my neighbors. It is too close for comfort, and for years, we've been putting up with boats being stored back there. There's two sheds right next to our fences. It's way too crowded and too dangerous.
Anybody else? Okay, well, we definitely hear a lot of opposition, and it's been taken quite seriously by the board. We need to know what you want to do.
I would respectfully request to withdraw the application from the consideration of the board. Thank you.
We have to vote on that? Go ahead.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
A motion to allow the withdrawal of the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so what has just happened is the attorney has withdrawn the application. Can you, can you do it again? When? Okay, so he withdrew it now. He can come back at a time, but you would be notified if that ever happens again. And then we'll see you all again if and when that should ever happen. Have a nice weekend. Thank you. Okay, we need to accept the June 16th meeting minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to accept the letter from Jesse Schumer Esquire dated June 18th, 2025, regarding 40 Oak Street?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 15th. We do not meet, this board does not meet for the month of August. Have a nice rest of the summer, everybody, and thank you very much. Adjourned. Yep.